...clerk will read the call for the meeting of the constables return.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts Worcester S. S. to either of the constables of the town of Berlin in the county of Worcester. Greetings in the name of Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town fairs. To meet at the Berlin Memorial School in said Berlin on Monday, the sixth day of May two thousand thirteen next, at seven o'clock this evening, then to act on the following articles are in relation there too. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up protested copies thereof as per vote of the town in said town fourteen days at least before the time and place of meeting as foreset. Hereon fail not make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk at the time and place of meeting as foreset. Given under our notice this eighth day of April in the year of our Lord two thousand thirteen, board of selectmen Judith Booman Chairman, Thomas Andrew Clerk, a true copy test Howard H. Spaulding Constable Worcester S. pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Berlin by posting up protested protest copies thereof at the town hall, the town offices and the post office twenty-four days before the time of holding said meeting as within director, Howard H. Spaulding Constable, April eleventh two thousand thirteen.
We'll pass right on to these to try to move this along in time. Article one, to see if the town will vote to transfer our summer money from available funds to line item eighty snow and solid wages full-time in the fiscal year nineteen thirteen budget or take any action relative thereto. Is there a motion under article one? In the special. Who has the article one motion?
Ah.
Keith Clummer, Highway Secretary, you need to do it at the mic.
I moved to transfer the sum of five thousand five hundred and twelve dollars and forty-eight cents from free cash line eighty snow and solid wages full-time in the fiscal year thirteen budget.
The motion is to transfer the sum of five thousand five hundred and twelve dollars and forty-eight cents from free cash to line item eighty snow and solid wages full-time in the fiscal year thirteen budget. This is because?
Because we ran out of money, so.
Neither do I.
There's been a lot of snow.
Uh, Finance Committee's comment?
Finance Committee recommends.
Anything else to be said on the motion? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article two, to see if the town will vote to transfer a sum of money to line item eighty-two snow and solid expenses in the fiscal year thirteen budget. Mr. Clummer.
I move to transfer the sum of fifty-seven thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-five cents from free cash one eighty-two snow and solid expenses in the fiscal year
Motion made and seconded to transfer the sum of fifty-seven thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars and forty-five cents from free cash to line item eighty-two snow and solid expenses in the fiscal year thirteen budget. Mr. Clummer.
Unfortunately, we got a lot of snow, so we gotta buy a lot of salt and sand.
Finance Committee's comment?
Finance Committee recommends.
Anything else to be said on the motion? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article three, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand five hundred and two dollars and fifty cents from the River Road property damage insurance revolving account for the highway department's use for resurfacing River Road West or take any action relative thereto. Mr. Clummer.
I move to appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand.
Get closer to the mic if you would.
I move to appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand five hundred and two dollars and fifty cents from the River Road property damage insurance revolving account for the highway department's use for resurfacing River Road West.
Motion is made and seconded. To appropriate the sum of twenty-five thousand five hundred and two dollars and fifty cents for this purpose. Do you want to comment on it?
There was a car crash down there that actually burnt up the road really bad in a big area in the insurance company that has given us that twenty-five thousand dollars so they'd like to repair it.
Finance Committee's comments?
Fincom recommends.
Anything further to be said on the motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article four, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of fifty-seven thousand seven hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-four cents from the storage barn insurance revolving account to replace the equipment storage building which was located on South Common and any related expenses or take any action relative thereto. Selectman Thomas handle.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to pass over article four.
Motion made and seconded to pass over the article. Do you want to speak to that, Thomas?
Yes, this is insurance money that we got in the old chicken shed that was on South Common, collapsed in the snow a couple of years ago now. And as you know, we acquired the property on West Street for a new highway facility. Having this money and having the need to get up at least temporary shelter for equipment, we put this on. However, the planning board and others have indicated that they would like to take a little better look at this than simply putting it there in accordance with an initial conceptual plan, and we see the merit in that, so we are requesting you to pass over.
Does anyone want to speak to the motion to pass over? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous. Article five, see if the town will vote to close out the following special article accounts. Is the motion going to repeat all these?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll let you read it then.
I move to close out the following special.
Move closer to the mic, please.
I move to close out the following special article accounts. Article twenty-five FY eleven assessors GIS catch basin in the amount of fifty-nine twenty-one. Article thirty FY twelve municipal building utility shed in the amount of two dollars and sixty-three cents. Article thirty-two FY twelve police cruiser in the amount of thirty-nine dollars. Article thirty-three FY ten BMS library and office carpet in the amount of nine hundred and seventy dollars and to transfer the total amount of one thousand seventy dollars and eighty-four cents to the stabilization fund.
That's what I have to be appropriated to the stabilization fund.
And I mean to say appropriated to the stabilization fund.
Accepted by the second. Okay, this is a motion to close out special article accounts. These are accounts that have been established by previous town meetings for specific purposes, and those purposes have been accomplished, and therefore the money that's left from those accounts is hereby intended to go back for a possible future use. Assessors GIS catch basin, this was about the mapping, fifty-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. The municipal building utility shed, two dollars and sixty-three cents. Boy, they spent that one just about, right? The fiscal year twelve police cruiser, thirty-nine dollars. And article thirty-three in fiscal year ten, BMS library and office carpet in the amount of nine hundred and seventy dollars. Finance Committee's comment?
We recommend.
Finance Committee recommends. Does anyone else wish to speak on this matter? Hearing none, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article six, to see if the town will vote to amend the agreement entered into between the towns of Berlin and Boylston pursuant to chapter five-ten of the Acts of nineteen seventy pursuant to which the Berlin-Boylston Regional School District was established and now operates so as to adopt the amendments adopted and proposed by the Berlin-Boylston Regional School Committee on January twenty-four of nineteen seventy-three or take any action relative thereto. There is, there was a copy on the takeout table of what this amendment is all about. If you have a copy, fine. If you don't have a copy, raise your hands and we will have someone brought to you to say you can see what this is all about. All right, is there a motion under this article? Christine Keith of the Regional School Committee.
I make the motion to see if the town will vote to amend the agreement entered into between the towns of Berlin and Boylston pursuant to chapter five-ten of the Acts of nineteen seventy pursuant to which the Berlin-Boylston Regional School District was established and now operates so as to adopt the amendments adopted and proposed by the Berlin-Boylston
The motion is to amend the agreement entered into between the towns of Berlin and Boylston pursuant to chapter five-ten of the Acts of nineteen seventy pursuant to which the Berlin-Boylston Regional School District was established and now operates so as to adopt the amendments adopted and proposed by the Berlin-Boylston Regional School Committee on January twenty-fourth Would you like to speak to this person?
Basically, this article doesn't change anything. Back in nineteen seventy-two, the Regional School Committee changed the way the towns were assessed for Tohoto. As far as people can tell, the two towns agreed, and business at Tohoto has gone on the same way for forty years. While the town council says the Acts of nineteen seventy specifically stated town meeting vote was not needed, last year the state asked for proof of the town meeting vote while reviewing the paperwork for the new school and the move of the sixth grade to the towns front, to the region. While the state has tentatively allowed this school to open, this vote is needed to ratify that eighteen seventy-two decision.
So this was an action that was taken some years ago, but for some reason or other, we never voted on here, so therefore the state is requiring their on record of that in that effect. Finance Committee have a comment on this?
Fincom actually doesn't see this as a change, and so we're not taking a position like this. Okay. Do you think it's necessary? If you feel differently, we'll take it, whatever.
Are there any questions about? I suspect this was a vote that had to do with the eighteen-month budget and changing the fiscal year from January to June, July.
Yes.
I think that's what it went back to. And we just never voted. Are there any other questions or comments? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article seven, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of money from available funds for the payment of employee health insurance and our medical costs. Tom Judy.
I move, I move to pass over article seven.
Want to comment on the motion to pass over?
We didn't need the money.
Anything else to be said on the motion? All those in favor passing over article seven, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Is there a motion to dissolve the meeting? Selectman Judy Booman.
I move to dissolve the meeting.
Motion is made and seconded to dissolve the meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Meeting is dissolved, and we have about five minutes, and then we start with it. Call into order at this time. I'll ask the town clerk to read the call for the meeting of the constables return.
Commonwealth of Massachusetts Worcester S. S. to either of the constables of the town of Berlin in the county of Worcester. Greetings in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and warn the inhabitants of said town qualified to vote in elections and in town fairs to meet at the Berlin Memorial School in said Berlin on Monday, the sixth day of May two thousand thirteen next, at seven, seven-thirty o'clock in the evening. Then to act on the following articles are in relation there too. And you are directed to serve this warrant by posting up protested copies thereof as per vote of the town in said town seven days at least before the time of holding said meeting. Hereon fail not make due return of this warrant with your doings thereon to the town clerk as the time and place of meeting as foreset. Given under our notice this eighth day of April in the year of our Lord two thousand thirteen, board of selectmen Judith Booman Vice Chairman, Thomas Andrew Clerk, a true copy test Howard H. Spaulding Constable. Worcester S. S. pursuant to the within warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Berlin by posting up a test copies thereof at the town hall, the town offices and the post office twenty-four days before the time of holding said meeting as within director, Howard H. Spaulding Constable, April eleventh two thousand thirteen.
In your town report book, I called attention to page eighty, which has some general information about how we regularly conduct our town meetings, most particularly to the beginning, the very first paragraph about public safety. In case of emergencies, we urge people to exit through the four side doors of this room. Enables us to empty the room very quickly and get everybody safely out in that kind of a situation. And there are a variety of other things further that relate to how we conduct the meeting and what some of our local traditions are. The facing page, page eighty-one are the town bylaws that actually have to do with the conduct of town meetings, and also the duties of the finance committee. You hear the finance committee speaking frequently about different issues that are before us of a financial nature, and this gives you an idea of the work that they've done prior to the meeting to make those recommendations. I'm Barry Adrian, the town moderator. With me on the platform is Alvie Salz, the town clerk. And before me are the selectmen sitting right down in front of me, and the finance committee members seated at your left, and I will be recognizing those people by name in the course of the meeting. Anytime that you're called on to speak, please get up and give your name and address before speaking so that people will have some idea who you are. And with that much said, I'll pass on and start going through articles. Article one, to see if the town will vote to fill all vacancies and choose all necessary time offices not required to be chosen by Bell or take any action relative thereto.
Articles one through seven, I move to approve the motions as printed under articles one through seven of the warrants for this meeting.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the motions as printed under articles one through seven of the warrant for this meeting. We do this as a way to save a little time in the meeting. There are seven articles that are items that are taken up every year. They've all been voted in in previous years, and therefore, in order to save time, we're taking them up together. We will accept questions or comments on many of these articles at this time, and that is in order at this time. Mr. Andrew.
Mr. Moderator, I would like to commend you and to the annual town meeting the following passage from the written report of the board of selectmen. The board notes for sadness in passing, selectman Valerie Bradley. It was a pleasure to serve with her. Val was a selectman for twenty-two years. During this time, she also served as the selectman's representative in school union negotiations and on school building committees and was the liaison to the board, of the board to the highway investment partners. Val was also a veteran of the United States Marine Corps. She was a person of strong opinions, frankly expressed, but who served out of a sense of public duty and not because she had particular access to crime. In both military and civil service, she exhibited a public spirit and a willingness to work for the common good that has been a benefit to us all and that should be an example to us all. She will be missed.
Knowing Val should probably be just as happy as she was when she died after. There are some financial items in this set of articles, and I'd ask a recommendation for the finance committee.
Fincom has approved all the financial impacts.
Finance Committee recommends the articles that would be under their care. Does anyone else have any additional things to say about any of the printed reports or about any of the other articles that are on this list? If not, I will ask you to vote. The motion is to approve the motions as printed under articles one through seven of the warrant for this meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article eight, to hear and act on the reports of any outstanding committees or take any action relative thereto. Committees that have not yet reported in the printed reports are, are, are Judy.
They said if I didn't do a report, they'd dissolve my committee.
All right, you've got to get closer to the mic. You've got to go right into the motion.
This is the energy committee report. In June of two thousand twelve, the town became a green community. We received a grant of a hundred and forty thousand three hundred and fifty dollars, which will be spent on the following items. At Berlin Memorial School, we will put in a new energy management system. At Berlin Memorial School, we will also be doing some building on the local works to make it more airtight. At the municipal public safety building, they will have a new energy management system put in, and they will also have an economizer put on air handling unit one.
Notice the report of the energy committee and our other reports.
Kevin from the cable advisory committee? Yes, Kevin Diggs, one fifty-three Gates Pond Road. The cable advisory committee works with the selectmen on the licensing process with any cable company interested in providing service to the town, specifically understanding the needs of the town and negotiating contract terms for the selectmen to review and approve. There are currently four members of the committee, all of whom are here tonight. There is one agreement currently in place, a contract of charter cable, a ten-year contract that expires in January of twenty sixteen. The committee is already working on the renewal process to make sure we have plenty of time to get ideas and feedback from town residents and to negotiate the best deal possible for the town. We're kicking things off with two ways to gather input, and we're very much like your participation. There will be an open meeting on Monday, May twentieth at seven P.M. in the municipal building where you can come to ask questions and let us know your suggestions firsthand. Secondly, we'll be conducting a survey both by web and by mail to understand your experiences and opinions on how the current service is working and what we can change to make it better. Since the charter agreement is not exclusive, other providers like Verizon and Comcast have always been welcome to work with the committee on a similar contract. There's been very little interest from these providers in the past, but the committee will take this opportunity to approach those other providers and make the case for them to consider servicing the town. A few things to keep in mind, legally, these license agreements can only cover TV delivered over landlines, so satellite TV, internet, and phone service packages are not within the power of the town to regulate. Also, the cable advisory board is only involved in the business relationship between the town and the cable companies. A separate group called the Cable Access Committee is responsible for content on the local access channels and is involved in filming events like these and putting them on the channels twelve and fifteen and whatever. So there are some handouts in the back of the room with the details of the meeting and the survey, and we very much like your participation.
We have also under this article some announcements from the town clerk. Dog license lines start June first. You can remedy any problem in regard to dog licenses by purchasing your dog licenses at the time of the town election next Monday. And absentee ballots are available for the town election. You have to fill out your application for that, and which are outside the town clerk's office over the town offices, and see the clerk about absentee ballots for next week's She's got applications here too, so you can see her here tonight. Article nine, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate or borrow or transfer from available funds or otherwise provide all necessary sums of money to defray the town's expenses for the fiscal year beginning July one two thousand thirteen and to determine the salaries of the town offices for that period or take any action relative thereto. This is our general budget article, and we will be dealing with the budget in sections. I will call on the finance committee to start off the process and make their opening statement in regard to this year's budget. Scott Hawkins, the chair of the finance committee. Scott Hawkins, the Chair of the Finance Committee.
Um, sorry. We'll divide up among the Finance Committees to get a chance to meet all of us. We started meeting in... October, November, but we started meeting a long time ago. And in a manner with all the department heads, this budget was a rough one, not necessarily because of the operating side, but that we spent, as my report said, a lot of time talking about fire trucks, and I'm sure we'll get a chance to talk about some of it still tonight as we go through the budget. The increase is not large this year, mostly has to do with some school increases that actually might be remedied a little bit as we go through the budget, health insurance, some of the sort of standard things that went up. And I think we're going to talk about a few things as we get to those sections of the budget as well. Thanks.
Karen Manqueso of the Finance Committee. I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $802,142 to cover items one through fifty in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2014 budget. Motion is made and seconded to amend line item fifty-eight fire expenses in the FinCom recommended budget to read $72,820,000, and the total public safety to $1,386,379. Questions or comments in regards to any of these items are in order under this motion. You will note the total of $802,142 is the total in the next to the right-hand column at the bottom of this page, and that's what this motion covers is all of these appropriations. The Finance Committee has made the motion and therefore recommends this amount. Are there questions or comments about this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Bill Tomassino of the Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, I move to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,225,879 to cover items fifty-one through seventy-five in the Finance Committee's FY 2014 budget, and to appropriate from the inspector's offset receipts account the sum of $105,500 to the following line items. Item sixty-five, CombiGas Inspector wages part-time $31,000. Item sixty-seven, Inspector of Wires wages part-time $50,000. And item sixty-eight, Fire Inspector wages part-time $24,500. And to appropriate from Rescue Squad receipts reserved for appropriation, the sum of $80,000 to the following line items. Item sixty, Rescue Squad wages part-time $29,572. Item sixty-one, Rescue Squad incentive $5,270. And item sixty-two, Rescue Squad expenses $45,158 in the Finance Committee's FY 2014
Finance Committee, may I assume that all of these numbers total together to the $1,411,379? That is what shows at the bottom right under line item seventy-five in your book. The motion is to raise appropriate the sum of $1,225,879 to cover items fifty-one through seventy-five in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2014 budget, and to appropriate from the inspector's offset receipts account the sum of $105,500 to the following line items. Item sixty-five, CombiGas Inspector wages part-time $31,000. Item sixty-seven, Inspector of Wires wages part-time $50,000. Item sixty-eight, Fire Inspector wages part-time $24,500. And to appropriate from the Rescue Squad receipts reserved for appropriation, the sum of $80,000 to the following line items. Item sixty, Rescue Squad wages part-time $29,572. Item sixty-one, Rescue Squad incentive $5,270. And item sixty-two, Rescue Squad expenses $45,158 in the Finance Committee's fiscal year 2014 budget. The motion is made by the Finance Committee. That is their recommendation. Are there any other questions or comments under this motion?
Richard Sardell, 43 Baker Road. I move to amend Article nine, I move to amend line item fifty-eight fire expenses in the FinCom recommended budget to read $72,820,000, and the total public safety to $1,386,379.
Motion is made and seconded to amend line item fifty-eight fire expenses in the FinCom recommended budget to read $72,820,000, and the total public safety to $1,386,379. Mr. Sardell.
Yes, you heard Scott refer earlier to the fact that there's some discussion about fire engine. Well, this line item includes $25,000 for rental of a fire engine, and if that had been presented as an article, you would have had the opportunity to discuss that. The only way that you can discuss it, where it's part of the line item in the operating budget, is to have an amendment that takes it out. So if you vote for the amendment as a positive, it takes it out against it. If you vote for the amendment against the amendment, that leaves it in. But it gives you the opportunity to have discussion of why it's there and what the rationale is behind it. Otherwise, there's no way that I know that that discussion could take place.
So this is a motion to remove $25,000 with the intent that it would be for the rental of a fire engine.
That's my understanding from the Finance Committee report on page thirty-one, where they made notation that $25,000 was put into the Fire Department expense budget for fiscal year fourteen.
Someone else wish to speak to this motion? Bill Tomassino of the Finance Committee.
We spent a lot of time on the fire truck issue over the year. The ladder truck that we had was deemed unrepairable. This was done by the Board of Fire Engineers and withheld from Mary and Manqueso of FinCom. We then, and by we, I mean the Finance Committee, the Fire Department, several others' departments, looked at a couple of options. A new fire truck built to our specification would cost about $900,000. We looked at the option of borrowing the money to purchase a truck, and the other option of a long-term lease, ten- to twelve-year lease on the truck. We decided, I should say, also the Fire Department looked at the possibility of getting help from other towns, and right now, we're in a situation where the other towns have their ladder trucks out of service. Based on all of this, we recommended not to get a new ladder truck this year, and instead, lease a used ladder truck for the summer.
I move to accept the sum of $5,600 for cemetery perpetual care.
Motion made and seconded to accept the sum of $5,600 for cemetery perpetual care. Finance Committee's comment?
Finance Committee recommends.
Is there anything else to be said on the motion? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article twelve, see if the town will vote to approve the Assaf Valley Regional Locational School District's establishment of a reserve fund for compensated absences for employees terminating employment per provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty, Section fifteen D, or take any action relative thereto. Lynn Ryan of the Assaf Valley School Committee.
Lynn Ryan, Central Street. I move to approve Assaf Valley Regional Locational School District's establishment of a reserve fund for compensated absences for employees terminating employment per provisions of Energy Law, Chapter Forty, Section fifteen D.
Motion is made and seconded to approve the Regional School District's establishment of a reserve fund for compensated absences for employees terminating employment.
Just a couple of things. First of all, make sure you pick up a yellow booklet. It's personalized to Burling for Assaf Valley. Number two, I'd like to introduce to you and ask permission from the Moderator to allow him to speak to this issue. Pat Collins is our current Assistant Superintendent, and when our current Superintendent, Mary Joaquin, retires at the end of June, he has already been chosen by the committee to be our new superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Town meeting members, this is a pretty simple warrant article with respect to financial planning. This would allow the district to create a reserve fund for employees who leave the district either through retirement or termination. If they have sick or vacation time that is due to be paid to them, then you would pay them out of this reserve fund, and it would not therefore destabilize our operating budget. So if we had a large number of people retire, it wouldn't have an adverse effect on our operating budget.
So Finance Committee have a comment? No comment from Finance Committee. Does anyone else have a question or a comment on this motion? So this is going to all the towns for approval. The motion is to approve Assaf Valley Regional Locational School District's establishment of a reserve fund for compensated absences for employees terminating employment per provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter Forty, Section thirteen D. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries in the affirmative. Article thirteen, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds to the sum of $119,400 for the purpose of replacing one boiler at the Burling Memorial School or take any action relative thereto. The motion under Article thirteen. Chris Key for the Burling School Committee.
I move to transfer the sum of $119,400 from free cash funding for the purpose of replacing one boiler at the Burling Memorial School. Said sum to be expended by the Burling School Committee.
The motion is to transfer $119,400 from free cash for this purpose, and the amount of money is to be spent by the Burling School Committee. Christine?
Um, we've had an issue with the boiler for quite a while. We had requested $40,000 last year, which will go towards the cost, which was estimated at $159,400, and with the $40,000, the entire cost is reduced to $119,400.
Finance Committee comment? Mr. Hawkins?
We recommend that it is come out of free cash.
Finance Committee recommends. Is there others that wish to speak to this motion?
My real name is Rowena Turbo. I live at 188 Gates Pond Road. Most of my friends call me Judy. I'm just questioning, how old is this school? Why do we need a new boiler already? We just spent a lot of money on this.
The school is, I think, twelve, fif- fifteen years old. And, Mr. Moderator, I would ask that Mr. Roy Brown, architect that we have been working with, speak at this time.
Mr. Brown? This will be Mr. Griffiths. Who did he answer? What?
I'm sorry, Mr. Griffiths.
I'm Robert Griffiths with Robert Hall Consulting Engineers in Agaw, Mass. We were called in to provide a budget for replacement of the boiler because it's currently My opinion is that the boiler is suffering thermal stresses. It's cast iron boiler, and it's causing the leaking.
Somebody else wish to speak to the motion?
I just thought I'd make you feel worse when I tell you that we're going to take $86,000 from our Green Communities money and redo the energy management system that runs the HVAC and try to get all the Univens and other plumbing parts so that the whole
Peter Hoffman, 183 Brandle. I guess the question was asked, why? And I'm not sure that the architect or the engineer really answered it clearly. We all have water heaters of different sorts. They last longer and shorter. Now, there's the tankless. I don't know if the equivalent exists in a commercial setting, but it would be great to get a more comprehensive answer from someone that knows more than me. As to, first of all, why it only lasts ten years, it seems short for a commercial boiler. Fifteen, yeah. And equally importantly, why there's not a more seemingly green solution. Is there someone who can address that? A lot of advances have placed, a lot of advances have occurred in fifteen years. I can imagine that there's not a more comprehensive answer and a green solution. If you could address both those issues, that'd be great.
I'm going to refer and hear what is being questioned now.
Thank you.
I guess the first one is, there has been industry-wide problems with short lifespans on cast iron boilers. It has to do with, as I said earlier, thermal shock to the boiler, which is due to night setbacks and trying to save energy in the building. As far as additional green ideas that would replace the boiler, the fuel source for the boiler is currently oil. There is no natural gas here, so high-efficiency natural gas wouldn't be an option. I think to try and do anything besides replace the boiler in kind with something that is higher efficiency and less prone to problems would be a very expensive process. I think somebody had mentioned possibly geothermal. I think if you were to look at geothermal in the building, which we were not asked to do, it's a lower temperature water source that wouldn't be compatible with the systems in the building. You'd be looking at getting into all the systems in the building to try and do something of that sort.
Bill Colachi, 21 Pleasant Street?
I'm joined by yourself. I, I agree.
Bill Colachi, 21 Pleasant Street? It seems that we've had a number of heating systems in town that we replaced that are not very old, referring to a lot of work that we authorized last year and, or two years ago, I'm not sure which, at the town hall, which I presume was done about the time the school was built, and now the school. So I hope that the selectmen have improved their record with the new purchases. Looking forward. Um, the other comment, heating was, is the system a multiple boiler system, or is there a single monolithic boiler? And is there advantage to a number of smaller boilers in the same capacity as far as avoiding thermal shock?
Certainly two boilers. I think that's all you could say.
We have to hear the microphone for everybody who wants to.
It's a multiple boiler system. There's currently two boilers in the school. Replacing it with a lot of smaller boilers was not really looked at. I think there's space constraints in the boiler room that probably not allow you to
This school was built before the MSBA, the Mass School Building Authority, was changed, and it was built based on the lowest bidder. And we got what we paid for when it came to the HVAC system. It has, and the school committee can correct me, but it's never worked correctly. It's had ongoing problems, and I used some of the ENCBG, which was the, um, the ARR money, the stimulus funding money, to actually have someone come in and do a, um, try to see if it was commissioned correctly. And it doesn't appear to ever have been commissioned, which means it was never checked to see that it was working according to the specs. So from that report that we got from there, we've been trying to work on all the issues that that engineer gave us, and the boiler is just additional. I guess the boiler also was put, the same boiler was put into the Hudson School System, and it had some of the same problems where cold water is coming in from the, well, in our case, from the wells, and it hits the cast iron, and eventually it cracks and it rusts. And that's part of the issue.
Another?
Paul Keller, 35 Barnes Hill Road. I have two questions about this. One, you said that there was a second boiler. How much longer can we expect that to last? Or are we going to be replacing that next year? Or sometime very soon? And number two, the boiler that we're about to spend money to buy, is it also made of
The boiler that's not being replaced is currently not leaking. I wouldn't expect that it's going to last for a long time in the future if it's used. The new boiler would be cast iron, it's different design, so it's gotten away from
Dennis Allen, 285 Pond Street. I know when I buy my heating system, I get a guarantee. Do we have any guarantees on what this is going to last?
The guarantee would be from the boiler manufacturer, and I believe it's 10 years.
You all set?
Uh, Peter Hoffman again. It seems like there has been some good questions posed here, and perhaps this issue is not right for a decision quite yet. And are there any grant opportunities that we might be wanting to wait for or pursue? So it, I guess, all of us being homeowners and thinking of this parallel to a homeowner seeing a heating system, which of course it's not, it feels like this is just not right, while critical because it's leaking, it doesn't feel like it's right for a decision yet. And I wonder if you just could address that for a moment? As you, there were a couple of things you said that weren't addressed or looked into, and then the grant opportunities, which Judy's not even known, perhaps there are some. If there's none, thanks.
I wouldn't be able to address any grant opportunities. I think the timing, you're getting to the period of the year, if you're going to replace the boiler, you kind of need to move forward at this point in time. You're not going to be ready for the next season.
Hi, Jean Cole, 92 Gates Pond Road. Just thinking, maybe we should revisit the idea of the geothermal. From what I understand, the boilers are being wrecked by the thermal shock, and the whole concept of the geothermal is to bring up water, the earth temperature, about 50 degrees, which it saves on fuel to heat 50-degree water, and you avoid the thermal shock. And there may be grants for something like that as well.
Is there a feedwater heater in the new design? Is there a feedwater heater in the new setup?
There shouldn't be that much makeup water to this system.
How about a feedwater heater for the one we've got now, so it might last longer?
A feedwater heater would be a steam system. A feedwater heater would be a piece of equipment used in a steam system.
Same problem.
Jerry Free, 12 Brook Lane. This may be beyond your knowledge, but in regard to the 10-year guarantee on the boiler that you believe comes from the manufacturer, do you know, is it pro-rated? The way a tire is, so that if it goes after five years, you only get half the value towards the new one?
I believe the, uh, the way most of warranties have worked on boilers is that if the sections crack and they're still under warranty, they would provide new material but not labor, is what most of it worked.
I'm going to err on this, oh, Bill Colachi from 21 Pleasant Street. I'm going to err on the side of cautionous waiting because I've been in the building a couple days after a hundred million, or a million BTU boiler blew out, and having a building full of steam is not a good thing.
Um, we have been dealing with this for quite a long time. We've talked about the fact that it's not been a lot of time since the school was built. However, we can't continue to go on with the boiler leaking. And in regards to the question about grants, there is the possibility that we may be able to put together a statement of interest and submit it to the MSBA, and if it's accepted, we could be reimbursed for a portion of this cost if they agree that this is something that they'll support. It's something that needs to be done.
Move the question. Are we done talking? The motion is to transfer the sum of $119,400 from free cash for the purpose of replacing one boiler at the Berlin Memorial School. Said sum to be expended by the school committee. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
The ayes have it. Motion carries in affirmative. Article 14, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds to some of $96,000 for the purpose of repairing a roof at the Berlin Memorial School, or take any action relative thereto. Scouting for the motion.
Angela Gildes, 55 Road. I move to appropriate the sum of $96,000 from stabilization for the purpose of repairing the roof at Berlin Memorial School. Said sum to be expended by the Berlin School Committee.
The motion is to appropriate the sum of $96,000 from the stabilization fund for the purpose of repairing the roof at Berlin Memorial School. Said sum to be expended by the Berlin School Committee.
Last year, we requested $3,200 at town meeting to perform a roof survey and inspection to identify the problems with Berlin Memorial Roof and propose solutions to resolve the issues with the roof. The roof is 14 years old. The workmanship of the installation was judged to be subpar. Leaks are in the preschool, grade one, and kindergarten classrooms.
Finance Committee's comment? Scott?
We voted to recommend it.
Anything to be said on this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote with motions to appropriate $96,000 from the stabilization fund for the purpose of repairing the roof at Berlin Memorial School. Said sum to be expended by the Berlin School Committee. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries in affirmative. The moderator declares that a two-thirds vote, because that's required for the, um, for appropriation from the stabilization. Article 16, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds to some $10,000 for the purpose of mold remediation while repair work at Berlin Memorial School, or take any action relative thereto. Article 15, Angela?
I move to transfer the sum of $10,000 from free cash for the purpose of mold remediation while repair work at Berlin Memorial. Said sum to be expended by the Berlin School Committee.
Motion is $10,000 from free cash for this purpose. Thank you, Angela.
This mold remediation is for the library to prevent the potential mold that could develop. This is due to the roof issues. The roof will need to be repaired so we can also repair this area within the building.
Finance Committee's comment?
Finance Committee recommends.
Anything else to be said on the motion?
Uh, Blair, 28 Center Road. Uh, just as a point of interest, both because, well, because of three things. The boiler issue, boiler should have lasted 30 years, we're getting less than 15. Roof issue, which we're told was a subpar job, and now the issue of mold remediation. Is there a clerk of the works on these projects? Will there be on this one who will oversee the work that's being done, the equipment being provided, to make sure it's not being had a second time?
Permission from the moderator to call up Roy Brown, our architect? Oops, he just left. But, Alan, Chris, to speak on this?
Um, the question was, clerk of the works. There would be an architect that would, and one of the things that we've had to deal with lately is because of some of the facilities issues, we've talked about getting a facilities person. Right now, that's part of the job of the finance director, which is a huge job in itself. So that is one of the things that we are working on at this point in time. We do not have a facilities person at the moment, except for the finance director, and that's something that needs to be done.
I would like to just say also on all of these projects, Roy Brown and Rob Griffiths, who you just heard tonight, they will be the overseers, kind of what we would call our operational projects managers, to oversee all of these projects that are getting done accurately, and they will be signed off by the engineers and the architects. In the past, when some of these repairs have been done, there wasn't an actual clerk of the works. It was the business director that would have to sign off because they said the job was completed. This is actually validating and making sure that the jobs are getting done appropriately.
Mary Reddington?
Mary Reddington, Pleasant Street. So the gentleman that just left?
Into the mic.
Um, would there be any recourse if this failed in the future, that they are going to be responsible for the project? And while we're talking about it, if you can answer it, are we covered in any way for the new building for these types of things, either by the builder, the architect, or
As Judy Blumen explained earlier, previously with MSBA, the regulations were quite different than they are today. And so we do have an OPM, which is our operational projects manager. TMA is their, is the name of their organization, and they actually have been overseeing all of these projects in the new building. And yes, the warranties are much different today, and they've overseen, MSBA actually did come about two weeks ago to come and do an actual tour of the facility to hunt out, to write off and give approval of what they have seen and do the actual, and the visits hadn't been done previously in other buildings. That was a new step that they've done as an extra measure. So here, yes, Roy Brown would be signing off, or the architects would be signing off, stating that it was done to specifications that were placed on the bids, and then the warranty actually goes back to the contractor that does the work.
Anything else to be said on Article 15 motion? Motion is to transfer the sum of $10,000 from free cash for the purpose of mold remediation while repair work at Berlin Memorial School. Said fund, sum to be expended by the Berlin School Committee. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries in affirmative. Article 16, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer from available from available funds to some of $5,000 for the purpose of exterior building repairs at Berlin Memorial School or take action relative to that. Motion under Article 16. Ruth Landin, the school committee?
I move to transfer the sum of $5,000 from free cash for the purpose of exterior building repairs at Berlin Memorial School. Said some to be expended by the Berlin School Committee.
Motion is made and seconded to transfer the sum of $5,000 from free cash for the purpose of exterior building repairs at Berlin Memorial School. Said some to be expended by the Berlin School Committee. Ruth?
This is to clean the residue that has developed on the, uh, facing the front of the building. Um, we currently don't have any mold on the outside of the building, um, that had been tested in December. Um, however, the residue that is there could, um, turn into a mold and mildew issue. We want to get it taken care of before it does.
Finance Committee's comment?
Finance Committee recommends.
Other others that wish to speak? I thought I saw a hand, but it's not. Okay, I'll ask you to vote $5,000 from free cash for the exterior building repairs at Berlin Memorial School. Said some to be expended by the Berlin School Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries the affirmative. Article 17, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds to some of $7,500 for labor and materials to refinish and seal the downstairs hallway and stairs at the Berlin Public Library. Bob McFay?
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $7,500 from free cash for labor and materials to refinish and seal the downstairs hallway and stairs at the Berlin Public Library. Said some to be expended by library trustees.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, this is from free cash. Bob, you want to speak for him?
Yeah, for those who haven't been to, uh, the library recently, or haven't been there at all, the downstairs hallway and the entrance off the, you know, from the outside there is the way we get to the children's library. And that whole hallway down there is pretty dingy. The floor, to my knowledge, has never been refinished. It's wood, old varnish. So this is where we dispose that area.
Finance Committee's comment?
Finance Committee recommends.
Does anyone else wish to speak to the motion under Article 17? Hearing no one, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Motion carries the affirmative. Article 18, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds to some of $2,500 for labor and materials to replace windows at the Berlin Public Library with energy-efficient units. Mr. McFay?
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $2,500 from free cash for labor and materials to replace windows at the Berlin Public Library with energy-efficient units. Said some to be expended by library trustees.
Motion made and seconded. $2,500 from free cash. Finance Committee's comment?
Finance Committee recommends.
Bob?
Uh, this is to continue, uh, the window replacement that we started, uh, two years ago. We replaced the end windows where the air conditioners are. We're gonna move across to the face of the building. The windows, again, are original and they're really drafty. And, uh, we're hoping that we can recoup this as a heating cost and the comfort to the patrons and to the employees of the library.
Other others that wish to speak to this motion? Hearing no one, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous. Article 19, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds to some of $35,000 for the purchase of a new police cruiser. Tom Andrew, the selectmen?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move to transfer the sum of $35,000 from free cash for the purchase of a new police cruiser to replace the 2008 Ford Crown Vic police sedan. Said some to be expended by the selectmen.
Motion made and seconded for $35,000 from free cash for this purpose. Thompson?
Uh, this is, uh, part of the Capitol Plan periodic replacement of the police vehicles. Um, the vehicle that is taken, uh, out of service will be refurbished if, uh, Article 30, I believe, is successful in the use as the fire chief's vehicle.
Finance Committee's comment?
Finance Committee, Finance Committee recommends.
Anyone else wish to speak to this motion?
Asha Johnston, Baker Road. I was gonna say Pleasant Street, that's where I grew up, sorry. Um, I just wanted to know what we had to free cash and where we are right now.
Uh, we have, uh, we started this evening before both meetings with, uh, $563,655 in free cash. And we spent about, we spent $144 at this meeting. Um, the, the total spent tonight, if we approve all articles, uh, fits within, uh, what was recommended to us by the Finance Advisory Committee. Um, it does leave us, uh, a chunk of money at the end of the night. I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but we spent about $144, we spent $144 so far at this meeting.
Can you say exactly, actually?
You, you said $148?
Well, $145 plus the 63,000 spent in the special.
So, we spent $200,000 so far.
Judy?
The $63,000, the special town meeting is for articles for this fiscal year, which ends June 30th. What we're spending right now is money that starts July 1st for fiscal year 14.
Richard Sardell?
Richard Sardell, Baker Road. Um, I'd ask you, ask you to look at, if you would, page 22. Lost it.
What do you want? A list of vehicles?
Vehicle list.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. There it is. Thank you. Thirty-four. Um, that list of vehicles. Up until 2011, and as far back as, as I could find, we've had three cruisers. Essentially, there was two in use and one as a backup. That was the way all of them rotated, uh, through use. In 2011, you may remember, uh, the Crown Vic, that was the last year for Crown Vic, which was the standard for more, practically every police car in the country. Um, so, the, we looked at what to do about that because there was no real clear replacement for the Crown Vic. And unfortunately, the police chief is no longer with us. Oh, that doesn't mean he's not with us. We've been a worse than that. Too many of my friends. Anyway, the, um, so what we did was, we said, okay, because we don't know what the replacement is, some people are looking at doing a refurbish of Crown Vics. So why don't we get the last year of the Crown Vic, which we did, and if you're looking at, it shows the seat edition, 2011. But what we'll do is not trade in the old one. But, and the following years, we'll refurbish one of the Crown Vics and put $14,000 in the budget for that purpose. And we did that, uh, the following year, last year, and, and got the $14,000 for the 2007, and seven cruiser. So the reason we kept the four then was to allow the, the traditional three plus a backup, um, recognizing that that fourth one would probably be out of service for some time or be refurbished. So it wouldn't leave us in the lurch. Well, I mentioned the police chief leaving, but memories get short and we forget why we did some of these things. So right now, we're at four cruisers. Never more than two in service at a time. So there's really no need to have this extra vehicle at this point. In my opinion, it would be safer to just pass by this one. The jury's still out as to the replacement of the Crown Vic. There are some police have adapted, adopted certain vehicles and others, others. I don't really wanna get into what the best one is. Uh, the choice here may in fact be the one that, uh, will eventually be there. But if we allow it, there's no risk in not getting this fourth vehicle. Um, and we can wait for the new police chief, who then can make the determination and recommendation of what the Crown Vic should eventually be replacing. Because he's gonna have to live with it, uh, for the next, uh, seven years, hopefully. So that's where I'm at. So I'm recommending a no vote on this particular one.
Other others that wish to speak? The motion is to transfer the sum of $35,000 from free cash for the purchase of a new police cruiser to replace the 2008 Ford Crown Victoria police sedan. Said some to be expended by the Louis selectmen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no.
No.
Guess we'll have a hand over now. Tom Sandman, would you please help us come through? Jerry Free, would you help us come through? Terry Brown, would you please help us? Those three people come up, please. All those in favor of the motion, please raise your hands. Fifteen yes on the left. Twelve yes in the center. Twelve yes on the left. Those opposed, please. Sixteen no's on the left. Eleven no's in the center. Eleven no's on the right. Thirty-nine yes, fifty-five no's. The motion fails. Article 20, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate, borrow or transfer from available funds to some of $6,000 for sprinkler system renovations at the town office's public safety building in phase two or take any action relative to that. Fire chief goes for a kind. Motion under Article 16.
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of $6,000 from free cash for phase two of sprinkler system renovations at the town office's public safety building. Said some to be expended by the Louis selectmen.
Motion's made and seconded. Transfer the sum of $6,000 from free cash for phase two of sprinkler system renovations at the town office's public safety building. Said some to be expended by the Louis selectmen. Ruth?
There's a trend here. As Judy Boomen had said earlier, uh, at least under the old way of doing business in the state, uh, we went with the low bid, the cheapest thing out there. Uh, last year, for those of you that remember, I moved that we spend money for phase one, which we've done, which is to repair, replace half of the dry pipe system in the public safety building. From a technical standpoint, what's happened is that, um, the attic space in the public safety building is not heated. Therefore, you can't have a sprinkler system with water in it. So it is what's called the dry pipe system. But you have that system pressurized so that when the heat opens up, the orifice and the sprinkler up there, it releases that pressure. And then it trips a valve through the water in the heated area and it fills that pipe to part with the fire. Otherwise, it stays dry. That's kept charged with compressed air. When the air compresses, there obviously, uh, there's water that results. That water runs down to the low point, which is the largest pipe in that system. The pipe that was originally installed was obviously the cheapest thing money could buy, but meant what we could use at the time. Last year, we replaced half the system to, to replace some of the leaks that we were having in the system. And this phase is to replace the rest of that. The pipe we're using is a galvanized pipe, which will last better than the original pipe. It's not as good as cast iron, but cast iron would be, I'd say, cost prohibitive. Um, and we'll just take a chance if we can get 20, 30 years, whatever, out of the system this way. It does still leak. Uh, the air compressor that keeps the, it's called the jockey pump, that keeps the pressure in the system, happens to be diagonally from my office. And I listen to that thing every now and then, kicking on and off. And it really shouldn't be doing that on a regular basis. Um, I usually roam through the rafters up there to try and find the leak to pinpoint it. I haven't found the latest one, but hopefully this will rectify that problem and finish the job.
Finance Committee's comment?
Finance Committee recommends.
Does anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Sprinkler system repairs at the townhouse's public safety building. Now I'll ask you to vote the motions to transfer the sum of $6,000
the sum of six thousand dollars from free cash for phase two of the sprinkler system renovations at the town offices, public safety building, said some to be expended by the board of selectmen. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries with affirmative. Article twenty-one, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds to the sum of three thousand dollars for emergency generator repairs at the eighteen-seventy Town Hall, or take any action relative thereto. Thomas?
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of three thousand dollars from free cash for generator repairs at the eighteen-seventy Town Hall, said some to be expended by the board of selectmen.
Motion made in second to the sum of three thousand dollars from free cash. Thomas?
Yeah, this is for repair of the existing generator that would allow the old Town Hall to be used as a place of refuge in the event of storms, power outages, and so on. Someone told me, and perhaps this is wrong, that this was indicated as one of the secondary resources if there should be a problem at the school. It's a relatively small amount of money. We have a generator that we received a number of years ago that's inoperative up there. I would note that I took the word "emergency" out of the vote, even though it's an emergency generator, because I wanted to make the point that although I think this is advisable, I think it would be good to have that as another source. It's not an emergency.
Finance committee's comment? We recommend a reconsider. Anyone else wish to speak to this motion? Mr. Sardell? Chief of time?
Yes, I just wanted to confirm that it is considered an area of refuge in the school plan if we had to evacuate that building and house the kids in some other place. Why we might have to do that would be an emergency, that we have to get the kids out of this building to put them in another building, either because of a hazard that's here or if you remember, a number of years ago, we had a significant brush and tire fire and the smoke was coming over in this direction. Did shut down heating systems here to keep them sheltered in place. So it is one of the two. The other is the Town Hall. The second place to put the kids in refuge. The other thing is, this system would also... If we had a long electrical outage, which we occasionally do here in Berlin have that, it would help the environment in that building so that it doesn't freeze up the pipes and we don't have a more significant issue with the leak from the heating system, which is possible.
Richard Sardell? Richard Sardell, make a room. Last year, we were asked to improve three thousand dollars for electrical work for the generator at eighteen-seventy Town Hall. And we were sure that this was for the connections to the generator and the generator was in fact in working condition. And therefore, all we needed to do was hook it up. Now we need three thousand dollars to repair this hooked-up generator so that it'll run, apparently. And then what? What's next? Now we'll find out if the fuel tank leaks or the base is no good, or what. It seems to me that when you do something like this, it's fair to come forward with the total price for what you're doing at one time. So you know how much you're really improving, rather than getting into it three thousand dollars at a time. You spent that, so you should spend three thousand dollars more. I just think there's too many unknowns with this. And the emergency plan calls for, I believe, the administrative offices. This is first. The school is the first. And the administrative office makes second. And then the Town Hall was added as the third. So that's all right. The building, eighteen-seventy Town Hall, hasn't had a generator there since eighteen-seventy. And I don't think it's... I don't think it's frozen the heating system. Since I could be wrong. But anyway, I would ask a question on this one. Is this it? Is this enough? Are we sure that they're not coming back again? And this is the final... the final request. Thank you. Someone answer the question? Why do you do the final request? Thomas?
The tank up there is the original tank. Ruth, I don't know if you have anything more to say. But I've been personally sitting here tonight to say there wouldn't be some further expense to this here.
One, there are no guarantees. It was my understanding when we spoke to this motion last year that the money that we were raising was to put this back in service. Apparently, the way the article is written, it could only be used for reconnecting the electrical transfer part of the system. The building has had an emergency generator in its sense, it was a police station. So I think sometime between eighteen-seventy and now, the generator was put in place. When they did the rewiring on the building, they disconnected all that wiring related to the old systems and put in a new panel, et cetera. They did not put in the money to do the transfer of the electrical end of it. So if there was anything, there was a miscommunication last year in terms of what this money was going to accomplish. When I spoke to it last year, my assumption was it was to put the generator back in service again. It's been sitting there either for a while now. And the money that's there currently can only be used for the electrical transfer switch on the system and reinstituting that. This money will be to put the generator back in service. The fuel tank is functional right now. Is it going to spring a leak tomorrow? I don't know. Is your oil tank at home going to spring a leak tomorrow? I don't know. I don't anticipate it. But if it did spring a leak, there are alternatives in terms of just going with another tank, just a separate tank, if you had to do that, which is... I don't know what they run these days. Then with the plumbing and heating, it might be able to address that. But certainly not thousands of dollars. But that's not anticipated.
The motion is to transfer the sum of three thousand dollars from free cash for generator repairs at the eighteen-seventy Town Hall, said some to be expended by the board of selectmen. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
Motion carries with affirmative. Article twenty-two, to see if the town will vote to authorize the board of selectmen to accept a gift of one point oh four acres of land for general musical purposes located on the northerly side of West Creek and shown on Berlin assessment map fifteen point one block five block zero, or take any action relative thereto. Mr. Andrew?
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article twenty-two.
Motion made in second to pass over. Anyone want to speak to that, Thomas?
Yeah, the opponent of the motion is present at the town meeting, my knowledge, hasn't left. Anybody sufficient information to speak about it?
Anyone want to speak on the motion to pass over? Now I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor of passing over Article twenty-two? Say aye, Thomas?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? unanimous vote to pass over. Article twenty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds to the sum of three thousand six hundred dollars for safety jackets for the Berlin Rescue Squad, or take any action relative thereto. Motion under Article twenty-three. Mr. Andrew?
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of thirty-six hundred dollars for free cash for safety jackets for the Berlin Rescue Squad, said some to be expended by the board of selectmen.
Motion made in second to transfer the sum of three thousand six hundred dollars from free cash for this purpose. Thomas?
Yeah, this is again, you know, part of a periodic renewal, refreshment of the equipment. It's, I believe, part of the capital plan.
Finance committee's comment?
Fincom recommends.
Anyone else wish to speak on this motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor of to transfer the sum of three thousand six hundred dollars for free cash for safety jackets for the Berlin Rescue Squad, said some to be expended by the board of selectmen? Those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries with unanimous vote. Article twenty-four, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds to the sum of eight thousand dollars for defibrillators, defibrillator repairs and supplies, or take any action relative thereto. Dennis Ferbey, the West Creek.
Dennis Ferbey, Town Frehder, Berlin Rescue Squad, and a whole bunch of other committees. I move, Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of eight thousand dollars from free cash for defibrillators, defibrillator repairs and supplies, said some to be expended by the board of selectmen.
Motion made in second to transfer the sum of eight thousand dollars from free cash for defibrillators, et cetera. Dennis?
This is the last year of a three-year plan to replace all of the defibrillators the town had. At one time, we had forty different brands. We had forty different training. These defibrillators are able to be used by both the public and the medical professionals. And this is the last that had to be replaced. We'll probably look at replacement eight, ten years down the road when the cycle will start again.
Finance committee's comment?
Fincom recommends.
Does anyone else want to speak in the motion? The motion is for eight thousand dollars from free cash for defibrillators, defibrillator repairs and supplies, said some to be expended by the board of selectmen. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the apportionment of chapter ninety transportation bond issue monies in the amount certified by Commonwealth of Massachusetts, or take any action relative thereto. Motion under Article twenty-five? Keith Clummer, Highway Superintendent. And a bunch of other things.
Keith Clummer, Highway Superintendent. I vote to appropriate the apportionment of chapter ninety transportation bond issue monies in the amount of two hundred ninety thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars.
Motion made in second to appropriate the apportionment of chapter ninety transportation bond issue monies in the amount of two hundred ninety thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars.
Yeah, again, this is the money that the state always gives us, but we never know exactly how much it is. I'll be using it to repair roads and bridges, the exact amount. Again, the legislature hasn't completely done, but the last figure that we got is this figure. Last year, we got a hundred and ninety-four thousand. And if you looked at any of the other newspaper articles, they've been saying everybody's going to be trying to get an extra hundred thousand this year, which this is what it looks like.
Finance committee's comment?
Finance committee recommends.
Anybody else want to speak to the motion? Best people like to spend state money. The motion is to appropriate the apportionment of chapter ninety transportation bond issue monies in the amount of two hundred ninety thousand nine hundred seventy-two dollars. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries with unanimous vote. Article twenty-six, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds to the sum of seventy thousand dollars for the purchase of hot top, or take any action relative thereto. Mr. Clummer?
I'm back. I move to transfer the sum of seventy thousand dollars from free cash for the purchase of hot top, said some to be expended by the board of selectmen.
Motion made in second to the seventy thousand dollars from free cash for this purpose. Keith?
Again, this is the money that you guys are going to help me out with so I can put some hot top on your roads.
Finance committee's comment?
We recommend.
Does anyone else wish to speak in this motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article twenty-seven, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds to the sum of twelve thousand dollars for the purchase of a Z nine fifty-eight John DeAmmore, or take any action relative thereto.
Keith Clummer, Highway Superintendent. I move to transfer the sum of twelve thousand dollars from free cash for the purchase of a Z nine fifty-eight John DeAmmore, said some to be expended by the board of selectmen.
Motion's made in second to twelve thousand dollars from free cash for this purpose. Keith?
This is a lot more than we need to replace. A nineteen ninety-seven, which is seventeen, almost eighteen years old. The men have been nursing this law for quite some time now. Again, what's going to happen now is if we put the good money after that, if we don't go ahead and replace it. And in case you didn't notice, we do have an awful lot of green, beautiful green grass in the town of Berlin, and we do have to maintain it.
Finance committee's comment?
Finance committee recommends.
Does anyone else want to speak to this motion? I'll ask you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article twenty-eight, see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds to the sum of fifteen thousand dollars for the purchase of a used four thousand five hundred twenty John DeAmmor tractor, or equivalent.
Keith Clummer, Highway Superintendent, Facilities Manager. I move to transfer the sum of fifteen thousand dollars from free cash for the purchase of a used four thousand five hundred twenty John DeAmmor tractor or its equivalent, and it's some to be expended by the board of selectmen.
Motion made in second to this is from free cash. Keith?
This is a tractor. We have one just like it. But again, there's more area now. And we now have two toe behind twelve-foot gang mowers. We also have a sideboard. Anyways, this tractor, we have many, many attachments to go on one tractor. If I had two tractors, we could certainly get an awful lot more work done. A new tractor of this type would cost about twenty-five to twenty-seven thousand. I've been looking around a little bit, and I'm quite confident that I will be able to get one for about fifteen thousand dollars without a problem.
Finance committee's comment?
Finance committee recommends.
Does anyone else wish to speak to the motion? Harry Noah, I'll ask you to vote. This is fifteen thousand dollars from free cash for the purchase of a used John DeAmmor tractor. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds to the sum of eighteen-seventy. Article twenty-nine, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds to sum of money to purchase building officials permitting inspectional services software, or take any action relative there too.
Dennis Ferber, again, I volunteered for this one. I move to transfer the sum of eleven thousand seven, uh, Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of eleven seven fifty from free cash to purchase building officials permitting inspectional services software, said some to be expended by the Board of Assessor.
And your permission, Diane Peterson up here? Town Attorney's vote.
The motion is to transfer the sum of eleven thousand seven hundred fifty dollars on free cash to purchase building officials permitting inspectional services software, said some to be expended by the Board of Assessors, and I recognize Diane Peterson as Assistant Assessor.
Diane Peterson, Assistant Assessor. Uh, this has been a five-year study on permitting inspectional services software. For, um, the reason I'm actually proposing it on behalf of the inspectors is because it ties into the assessor's software. Um, there are a number of agencies that are promoting this, um, type of software. It's something that, um, we do today is a manual, I think we're still typing these building permits. Um, there's a lack of communication between inspectors on who's doing what, what property, on what day. Um, sign-offs seem to be a problem. So, over the past five years, we've been actually demoing, um, not just the inspectors, but it's something that can be used by, uh, the Board of Health are very interested in the program. A Council on Aging can use it, Tom Clerk can use it, it's a very versatile, um, program. Um, the day after we submitted the article, we found out, or read in the newspaper, that Central Mass Regional Planning Commission had just been awarded a grant of a hundred and twelve thousand dollars for nine communities to get inspectional services software. Unfortunately, the assessors or the inspectors in the town of Berlin were never notified to get in on the grant. Um, but we have been in contact with them almost on a weekly basis since we read about that. The RFP is, was issued so that more towns could get in on this software, so that's the way the RFP was written. We'll have an answer actually this Friday on how that looks, so we may not have to spend any of this money, that would be the, the good thing, or, uh, we may have to do some matching of some much less of a, uh, an amount of money. So, we're asking your support on behalf of the inspectors.
Finance committee's recommendation?
Finance committee has recommended this.
Finance committee recommends this motion. Other others wish to speak to it? Richard Sardell.
Richard Sardell. How much are going to save by getting this software? Could we get an answer on that? In other words, if I spend eleven thousand seven hundred dollars, I would assume that it, um, saves some labor somewhere and had reduced the cost to the town. Do we have any information on that? Kim?
I'm from Village Corp. Um, I don't have a direct answer to mature, but I had my basement finished about two years ago, um, and it took two full years to get the assessment done and the, um, final inspections done. And I think the town would save an awful lot of money if they had assessed me two years earlier and I would have paid more taxes.
That's good. Last year, there was two hundred and sixty-four permits issued. You can look on page twenty-two and see what the breakdown is. There's three inspectors, the building inspector has the bulk of that. Uh, there's a wiring inspector, a plumbing and gas inspector. Um, the plumbing and gas inspector... Let's see here. Uh, that's sixty-two, so that's a little over one a week. The wiring inspector's seventy-nine, so he's one and a half a week. And the building inspector is a hundred and thirteen, so he's a little over two a week. Would we really need eleven thousand dollars worth of software to keep track of these? I doubt it. And, um, I would, I would say that if the inspectors would come forward and say they're going to save something to the town, then perhaps it would make sense. But if we're just gonna spend money for the sake of the software, and it's not gonna save any, any, uh, money to the town, then I would suggest a no vote. Thank you.
Diane Peterson?
Well, I wish that some of the inspectors were here to answer that for themselves, but for the past five years, we're discussing all of the efficiency issues that would be gained in having this type of software. Not only can they use this versatile piece of software to connect to, um, say, the highway superintendent when he's out on the road, uh, the Conservation Commission, the Board of Health, this is a, it's a, could be a mobile device. Um, if someone was, one inspector was at a job and needed a, the building, say, the building inspector was there, and he would know that there was an electrical permit or inspection already done, would know the date. If the fire department had code issues, the building inspector wouldn't sign off. If he knew this would be something that the, all departments would have access to through security and passwords, it actually has a public, um, portion if the town department heads would allow public access to this. A person that pulled the permit could actually see where in the process their permit actually is. So, right now, we have paper trails, we don't have any, um, digital information. Um, one of the complaints I've heard from the inspectors is that really, they never know, um, what the follow-up is on a permit or an issue at a particular residence or commercial building. And they have to go through manual notes, and it takes a long time, and they have to be really organized. And with the part-time services that we have, um, they don't always remember to go back to a certain issue. So, on behalf of what I've heard, that's what I can offer.
Diane, would, would this include the information as to whether the taxes are paid on the property?
Yes, the tax collector actually has a sign-off as well. And this is something that actually could be used for, um, all the Board of Health, septic information, the leens, um, town clerk for licensing, uh, council on aging, rescue to know locations of oxygen in people's homes, what date those tanks were serviced. Um, it'll link to the GIS maps, um, catch basin information, dates those were inspected or repaired. It's pretty versatile.
Mr. Sardell?
Richard Sardell, tax collector. This, today is the first day I heard that the tax collector had something to do with the software. So, I have no knowledge of it from that perspective. But it seems to me that it's probably great software, and it would be wonderful for a town of any size, but two hundred and sixty permits a year, if we can't keep track of them manually, we're not gonna keep track of the loan system. Because of the, the amount of money. You'd need to have inspectors, if they're the users of it, they should be here telling us what it's gonna do for them, and how it'll save, if it's gonna save time, then are they going to take a less percentage of the fee, because that's how we get paid. So, you know, if you're gonna spend eleven thousand dollars, you ought to get something back.
Anyone else wish to speak in motion? The motion is to transfer the sum of eleven thousand seven hundred fifty dollars on free cash to purchase building officials permitting inspectional services software, said some to be expended by the Board of Assessors. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no?
No.
The ayes have it? Motion passes the affirmative. Article thirty, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds to sum of one thousand five hundred dollars to equip, repair, and refurbish a Ford Car Victoria Martin police vehicle to be used as a command vehicle for the fire department, or take any action relative there too. Chief O'Keeffe?
Everyone's all excited when this is gonna happen. Mr. Moderator, I move that we pass over Article thirty.
Motion made in second to pass over Article thirty. Bruce?
It's a moot point, given the earlier vote not to buy the, uh, replacement police cruiser. Well, if you wanna spend fifteen hundred dollars on the police cruiser that won't be available, I should do that.
Is there anybody else who wants, is there anyone else who wants to speak on that, on that motion? Now, the motion is to pass over Article thirty, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Unanimous vote. Article thirty-one, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds to sum of twenty-three thousand eight hundred twenty dollars for the pur- purchase of personal protective equipment to replace, worn, old and worn-out equipment used by members of the Berlin Fire Department, take action relative there too. Chief O'Keeffe?
Mr. Moderator, I move to transfer the sum of twenty-three thousand eight hundred twenty dollars on free cash for the purchase of personal protective equipment to replace old and worn-out equipment used by members of the Berlin Fire Department, said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
The purpose is the same, the, uh, amount is, is taken from free cash. Chief O'Keeffe?
The, uh, a number of years ago, the town got, uh, grants to purchase, uh, protective equipment. This would include the helmet, the hood, the coat, the pants, the boots, the gloves. It doesn't include the air pack that they would wear, it was a separate item. It's all, it's all lumped under the sum of personal protective equipment. It has an absolute lifespan of ten years now, by the standard, uh, which is basically two life cycles of the standard being revised. It's usually revised every three to five years, or figure five years. You're thinking after two cycles of it, the gear is so outdated and worn out that it should be replaced, if for no reason. However, what we're spending this on is cycling our gear will take those people that, some people are quite aggressive, and I don't mean that negatively, uh, they're active quite a bit, and the gear won't last three years. Someone who doesn't show up that much, the gear might last ten years. Uh, sometimes you'll have part of the gear that's worn out, and the rest of it is okay, that part which is worn out, because the standard has changed, you can no longer purchase, let's say, a pair of bunker pants to match the coat, because the standard's changed, the product has changed, and you can't match it up anymore as a complete ensemble. It'd be like, uh, having a three-piece suit, and you wear off the vest, and you can't match up the vest anymore. Maybe that's not a good analogy, but, um, things like gloves are lucky to last one year on someone that's, uh, pretty active. Um, maybe two years of a pair of gloves. Uh, hoods are similar, they get burn holes in the hoods, and those will wear off quicker. So, some of the, possibly some will wear off quicker than others. When we're able to, we can use the old mismatched sets of gear for someone that's new in the department, that, uh, doesn't have the experience, or they're not being put in a fire situation. However, once they do go to, uh, the Fire Academy, uh, basic program, they're required to show up with gear that meets the current standard, and I have to certify that, and even if I tried to fib it, they, that first night of their attendance, that gear gets checked to make sure that it passes.
Finance committee's comment?
FinCom recommends.
Brothers wish to speak on Article thirty-one? Dennis Allen?
Is this, is this part of the capital plan?
Yes, I'm sorry, it is part of the capital plan, I apologize.
Anyone else wish to speak? The motion is, transfer the sum of twenty-three thousand eight hundred twenty dollars on free cash for the pur- for purchase of personal protective equipment to replace old and worn-out equipment used by members of the Berlin Fire Department, said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds, a sum of money for the purchase, and a lease purchase of a ladder truck, quint, and related equipment to replace the current nineteen ninety-six, eight, nineteen eighty-three ladder one, or take any action relative there too. Chief O'Keeffe?
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article thirty-two.
Motion made in second to pass over Article thirty-two. Want to speak to that, Bruce?
As was referenced earlier, uh, by FinCom and, uh, Selectman Blument. We certainly didn't expect to have this problem at this time. I would be more than happy to not have had to entertain this at all. The truck was projected to be replacing the capital plan in the year twenty nineteen. It was probably unwise to have put it out that far, and that's not a blame comment. We all participated in putting this capital plan together. Why I say that is, it's actually the eighty-two, not the eighty-three, on the, basically everything except for the cabin chassis. Um, it's probably unrealistic to think that that was gonna last four years of years. It just so happened that it did finally go kaput on that end of the operation, so that the wheels and drive train are still functioning, but we're looking at seventy-six, seventy-six thousand dollars as an estimate for doing the repairs to get that thing back in operation, and there's absolutely no guarantee at that point that it would pass certification, it would still have to be recertified at that point. In concert with the Financial Advisory Committee, uh, the Selectmen, and, uh, FinCom, and I'd like to especially want to thank Ariane Mancuso and, and, uh, Selectman Julie Blument for, uh, participating in this process, including coming to the engineers' meetings and listening to the, uh, the reports from the consultants that reviewed the apparatus. Um, we all agreed that, uh, financially, the way things are, we didn't want to impose anything on the town at this time. So, the game plan is to hope and pray that, uh, the economy improves, and things get built, and there'll be some money coming from, um, the improvements that, uh, will take place on the periphery of the town that will finance this without costing the town. We'll see what happens.
The motion before you is to pass over Article thirty-two. Does anyone else wish to speak to that motion? If not, I'll ask you to vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds, the sum of buck two... from available funds, the sum of up to twenty-five thousand dollars for the costs associated with the development of construction drawings for the construction of an elevator addition for the eighteen seventy Town Hall, or take any action relative there too. Pat Smith of the Town Hall Advisory Committee, you have to read that first.
Mr. Moderator, Pat Smith, fifty-two Pleasant Street, um, Advisory, Town Hall Advisory Committee. I move to transfer the sum of twenty-five thousand from free cash for the costs associated with the development of construction drawings for the construction of an elevator addition for the eighteen seventy Town Hall, said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen.
Motion's made and seconded to transfer the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars from free cash for its purpose, said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. Matt?
I feel here with us for a minute or two, I know it's late, but we've put together some background here, um, very brief, to answer some questions that people have in the past. This is not the first time we've come before you asking for some support of the eighteen seventy Town Hall. Usage of the eighteen seventy Town Hall has increased from five thousand patrons in two thousand and seven to a consistent eight thousand people per year. The Grand Hall alone has hosted forty-eight events, public events such as plays, concerts, magic shows, drama, dances, et cetera. This growth in activity is evidenced by the accessibility of this wonderful space. Many residents have expressed frustration with their inability to attend events due to mobility challenges. In addition, the current ramp that goes up the side of the building is dangerous during the winter months, uh, with both ice from the ramp and ice from the roof above. The eighteen seventy Town Hall's mission is to serve the entire community, and after studying the issue and taking the following steps in the past four years, it is our recommendation to develop construction drawings. We can entertain hard numbers as to the cost of a small addition at the back of this historic building to house an accessible entry and an elevator that will access the performance platform and the Grand Hall. A quick summary of what has been done to date, as far as monies, monies we've gotten, monies we've spent, monies we have. The total monies spent from May two thousand and eight through January two thousand and thirteen are eighteen thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and ten cents. The architectural work that has been done, seven thousand eight hundred and forty-seven dollars. Our architect, Dan Barton of the Galli Architectural Firm, has been involved in various historical reconstruction projects, uh, projects in surrounding communities. His work for us has encompassed preliminary sketches, meetings to determine best site to include an elevator, and three concept drawings, which were used in this special project with various town groups. Civil engineering wedge test, ten thousand six hundred and forty-one. Anyone who has built in Berlin like we did, we had to blast in our house and knows the ledge, this ledge. The geotechnical, we spent ten thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars for a civil engineering wedge test. The geotechnical report included survey, topography, property line, plotting and plan preparation. Previous to this, there was no existing complete property map with a canvas, which includes the whole of us. We have in hand twenty-five thousand dollars that is to be used to an actual construction. We also have eight hundred and fifty-three dollars in an eighteen seventy Town Hall account specifically for elevator donations. Our article is asking for up to twenty-five thousand dollars for construction drawings. Our architect suggested that since we already have the detailed geotechnical report and some monies left for technical drawings in other articles, we could responsibly ask for twenty-five thousand dollars of bidable construction plans. We, of course, will be looking, working with the Historic Society and the Historical Commission, um, regarding the relocation of the, um, collection that is in that building, which would be, where we need to access the, the project building. Each year, we are going to respect all of the Berlin Town budgets and the economy while working toward an elevator, and we believe now is the time to proceed with construction drawings. We have been in the capital plan for some years, but when the economy was really bad, we kind of stepped back, and that's why we seem always here. Thank you.
Fire's please come in.
The Fire's Committee was split on this one, two to two.
Which means we do not have a vote in favor of ours. Are there others that wish to speak on this motion?
Thomas Allen, I'm delighted, and I'm also the ADA coordinator for the town, and so it's incumbent upon me to speak and represent the interests of those members of the town who may be disabled or impaired in terms of their ability to access, and that is a very challenging building to get into. Uh, it has been a wonderful success. It is a wonderful cultural focus for the town. Uh, and I think it is a great shame that it is inaccessible or accessible with great difficulty for a substantial portion of the town's citizens. I had the privilege of assisting the oldest citizen in the town of Berlin to an event recently, and I will tell you, it was a bit hair-raising and involved three people, um, supporting somebody through ice and snow on, uh, the side of the building, uh, taking a rug from outside and covering the ice that was, uh, that was on the, uh, on the platform. Uh, it was hair-raising for me, I'm sure it was hair-raising for that person, and power to her that she went through that effort, but I think that, uh, it's, it's a bit unfair to impose that on people. Uh, and I think that this is a, this is a really crucial further step to do, because once we have construction drawings, we can get a sense of cost, it'll be easier to apply for grants from nonprofits or the state, it will be easier to fundraise. We've done, and, and I cannot speak too highly of the Advisory Committee and the Town Hall who's taken that from, you know, the restoration of a shell to a really living, uh, institution in the town. Uh, but I think at every step, they have built toward this project with the money that's available, and this is, this is really a point at which with this, we can start to attract other money, with this, we can really start to assess the cost of the town, so I, I really very strongly recommend it.
Heather Robinson, wish to speak? Yes.
Kevin Dickens, speech on road. Uh, I've lived here a long time, my family's, uh, attended many events, many of those places and, uh, family events and things there, it is a wonderful facility, but very challenging, as Tom said, you know, Tom was mentioning, the ADA, which is more about compliance kind of thing, and I'm sure because it's an older building, there are some exemptions for that. I try to think a bit more positively as accessibility, which is not necessarily something that's legally disabled, but as people get older, those winding stairs are beautiful, but they're very, very challenging, the whole building is very hard to deal with, and, uh, I like the idea of getting it to the point where additional fundraising can be made, uh, performed to maybe offset the cost of the actual construction. This seems to be a reasonable step, I think I spoke to it last year as well, and it was proposed and, and voted down, and, uh, you know, at some point, I certainly hope, uh, the town supports it, because it is a, a beautiful building and a great community resource, and thanks for the committee for making it that way.
Tim Wheeler, two forty, Pleasant Street. I'm in favor of this, uh, this article. The, the planning board often ends up with, uh, hearing, public hearing issues where we can't stay in the public offices because the two facilities that are available there can only seat about fifty people. We end up in the cafeteria here, which, of course, a lot of us recognize the fact that it's not a, an environment to hold a public hearing in that's particularly amenable, it's with sound issues, and then your next option is to hold a public hearing in this space, which is ridiculous. So, the availability of that second floor as a publicly accessible space that belongs to the town really opens up some opportunities for us when we anticipate a public hearing or a public forum that's going to draw more than fifty people, and I think, uh, the town deserves an opportunity to, to get that space back and functional for, for every citizen.
Lisa Hudson? The ADA study committee?
I really look forward to the day when our eighteen seventy Town Hall is accessible to all the citizens of this town who would like to use it. Um, it's not just a matter of something that we want to do, um, this is something that we are required to do as a civil right to our citizens. We get around that by having closed circuit television so that people can access the first floor and can watch something that's going on on the second floor. Um, this is, um, not very good access, um, it's definitely something we need to move toward, um, and I think that this is the right next step so that we know what we're, are asking for. I would, however, uh, like to propose an amendment. Um, I would like to amend the article with the addition of the words "and for a curatorial storage building," so that the article would read, "The costs associated with the development of construction drawings for the construction of an elevator addition for the eighteen seventy Town Hall and for a curatorial storage building." The curatorial storage building is that building that the Historic Society uses to preserve our history of this town. Um, without including that in the town, in the, in the plan, we will be faced with a plan to vote on, which is taking away the building that currently houses our history. Um, as such, I could not vote for that, so I would like to see us add to this motion the requirement that the plan include a curatorial storage building.
Motion's made and seconded to amend Article thirty-three with the addition of the words "and for a curatorial storage building." Is there anything further to be said on this motion, which is simply the amendment adding those words? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. This is simply to add these words to the motion that's now, now on the floor. "And for a curatorial storage building." All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries the affirmative. So, the amended motion now is, "I move to transfer the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars from free cash for the costs associated with the development of construction drawings for the construction of an elevator addition for the eighteen seventy Town Hall and for a curatorial storage building, said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen." That's the current motion on the floor. Is there something to be said further on the motion that's on the floor? Well, the original motion has amended. Peter, did you want?
Peter Rothman again. So, I'm big on advancement, and I favor what is being proposed here, because it does advance, um, us, our citizenry, and what we do for each other, but, um, some years ago, I shattered my leg, and it gave me, it gave me a new sense that many don't have as to how disabled one can be with, um, a disability, and, you know, there are ways around it, like closed circuit and many other ways, but it reminded me, as I heard this article being spoken, that it could happen to any of us and all of us, unless we die early, become more and more disabled as we get older, so it sounds like a good thing to do, um, and I, I favor and I suggest that this motion be passed.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Okay. We're going to proceed to our vote. Uh, this is a, this amount of money is over ten thousand dollars, and because the Finance Committee had a split vote, we do not have a recommendation in favor from Finance Committee, so therefore, we have to take a paper ballot voting to Town Hall. I'm going to ask the following people, please be patient, I'm going to ask the following people to meet with the town clerk down in the back of the room, in the back of the room, uh, where we will set up the, uh, voting. I will explain more about the voting in a few minutes. Uh, the people are, are asked to see the town clerk, uh, Francis Gill, Louise Gianda, Joanne Richard, Buzz Harris, Paul Kelleher, Jane Sawyer, Jane Kane, David Westerling, When you go to vote, you're going to be given a yes or no ballot, and you're going to put your ballot in this, one of these cans, just one of them that's this color, one of these red, right? Oh, they're both yellow, oh my goodness. But always remember, the one you're voting goes in this can. You'll also see this nice box there, which is a waste basket. Don't put your vote in there, put the one that's left over in there, okay? Now, we're going to be using our voting cards that we're asking, like, you sign at the beginning of the meeting. When you go through, you simply show your card, and it will be checked off, and then you will be given your ballot and your vote. The use of the card just saves a lot of time in doing a paper ballot. I think I've said all the things that I need to say about it. The motion is to transfer the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars from free cash for the costs associated with the development of construction drawings for the construction of an elevator addition for the eighteen seventy Town Hall and for a curatorial storage building, said some to be expended by the Board of Selectmen. And just give us a few minutes to get some out. We'll, we'll have the, we'll have the, go out the door, fire door on this side, and come back in the door you originally entered through and come through to be, to do the voting. So, go out the door on the left side in the back as you face it, and come back in the way that you came in the first place. Moving the plates, please come back over. As I am a member of the Cemetery Commission, I will ask the Town Clerk to preside over election of a temporary moderator for Article Thirty-Four.
Yes.
May I nominate Tim Wheeler to be temporary moderator for the next article?
Good idea. Here it comes, would I have a vote to have Tim Wheeler be temporary moderator?
Vote aye.
Yes.
All those against?
No.
Thank you, Charles. Article Thirty-Four, "To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds, a sum of money for the purchase of a new mower and related equipment for the Cemetery Department or taking action relative thereto." Do I have a motion? Mr. Eager, Mr. Charles Eager? No, Mr. Barry Eager?
Mr. Moderator, "I move to transfer the sum of nineteen thousand dollars from free cash for the purchase of a new mower and related equipment for the Cemetery Department, said some to be expended by the Cemetery Commissioners."
I have a motion and a second. Does the Finance Committee have any comment?
The Finance Committee recommends.
Thank you. And Mr. Eager, will you be speaking on this article?
How will Mr. Moore?
Thank you, sir.
The Cemetery Department had the happy opportunity for many years to finance its own operations from the income from perpetual care and, and the income the Department generates. Unfortunately, in recent years, due to the complete drop of interest rates to nearly zero, we no longer have the luxury. The mowers that we currently have are fifteen and over twenty years old. They were both purchased, used from, with perpetual care funds some years ago. And at this point, we really, really need to have a new mower. One of the mowers we have is one that we found very satisfactory in about ten years of use. We purchased it used and we would like to buy a new mower of that type, which is well suited to our work in the cemetery because it's a, it's a smaller mower. The mowers that are used, for instance, to mow the fields here are wide mowers that are used in big expanses of open, open grassland. Whereas working in the cemeteries, and particularly the semicemetery where the stones are close together, we need something that can get into those narrow spots as well as work satisfactorily in the bigger areas. So that's our purpose here involved. We have increased the cost of this by over four thousand dollars by including within a dump section on it, which will take the clippings and enable us to dump them in a truck so that we can get them off the property. We've been dumping them in the edges of the cemeteries for some time. We're trying to get away from doing that and clean up the areas where that's been done. And secondly, we're just interested in being able to avoid some of the problems that have been involved in maintaining a large amount of clippings still around the place. So that's the reason for the additional amount that brings it up to the rather substantial sum of nineteen thousand dollars. But we really think this mower would be ideal for our use and would solve our problems for us and give us many years of service.
Are there any questions or additional comments? No one? All right, we'll proceed to a vote. The motion is to transfer the sum of nineteen thousand from free cash for the purchase of a new mower and related equipment for the Cemetery Department, said some to be expended by the Cemetery Commissioners. All those in favor signify and say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous vote, thank you very much. Mr. Moderator, would you like to return or do you want me to announce the ballot?
You know it.
No, no, I'll let you do it.
We have the results of the balloting on Article Thirty-Three. Ninety-six ayes, ten no. The motion passes the affirmative. Article Thirty-Five, "To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer from available funds, a sum of two thousand dollars for printing zoning bylaws of subdivision control regulations opposing the action relative thereto." Motion under Article Thirty-Five.
Mr. Moderator, "I move to transfer the sum of two thousand dollars from free cash for printing the zoning bylaws of subdivision control regulations, said some to be expended by the Planning Board."
The motion is to transfer the sum of two thousand dollars from free cash for printing zoning bylaws of subdivision control regulations, said some to be expended by the Planning Board. Want to talk about it? You want to talk about it?
Well, I'm not particular, I think I... Kind of sounds like a planetor.
Okay. Finance, please comment.
Finance Committee recommends.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on the motion? Hearing nothing, I'll ask you to vote. The sum is two thousand dollars from free cash for this purpose to be expended by the Planning Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimous vote. Article Thirty-Six, "To see if the town will vote to raise appropriate borrow or transfer available funds, a sum of five thousand dollars for the preparation of master plans for the Town of Berlin or taking action relative thereto." Mr. Moderator, Mr. Eager?
"I move to transfer the sum of five thousand dollars for free cash for the preparation of master plan for the Town of Berlin, said some to be expended by the Planning Board."
Motion is made and seconded to transfer the sum of five thousand dollars from free cash for the preparation of master plans for the Town of Berlin, said some to be expended by the Planning Board. Do you want to say anything?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Eager.
Five thousand dollars is something we can hire a... For people to help us. We have people that are working on this all the time for us to... The company?
Huh?
The company? At the plant. And we need to keep it going steady and it's going really good right now. This is one thing that we need to do. Do you have any questions?
Any questions? Finance Committee comment?
We recommend.
Finance Committee recommends? Is there anyone else who wants to speak on the motion? It is to transfer the sum of five thousand dollars from free cash for the preparation of master plans for the Town of Berlin, said some to be expended by the Planning Board. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries unanimous vote. Article Thirty-Seven, "To see if the town will vote to amend the Berlin's zoning bylaws by adding under Section 540 home-based contracting business, the following section is 540.9, duration of special permit." And you have that paragraph printed out in the article. Article Thirty-Seven, Timothy Wheeler, the Planning Board.
Tim Wheeler, from the Berlin Planning Board. "I move that the town vote to amend the Berlin zoning bylaws. By adding under Section 540 home-based contracting business, the following section is 540.9, duration of special permit." And it reads 540.9 and we are going to add one sentence, which I'll include in my motion. "Unless an earlier expiration date is specified by the Zoning Board of Appeals in a special permit, all special permits issued under this bylaw shall expire automatically upon the expiration of five years from the date of issuance. Prior to expiration, the applicant may apply for renewal of the special permit for another five-year period. Said applications are complying with all the provisions of Section 540 of this bylaw. Upon expiration of the special permit which has not been renewed, the applicant shall disassemble and remove any materials or equipment related to the home-based contracting business in its entirety within thirty days of the expiration of the special permit." And by adding the following sentence after the words "Section 540 of this bylaw." So this is, this is a modification which is going to be added. The text is, "If the applicant files a complete application for renewal of the special permit, prior to its expiration, the special permit shall be extended up to the time the Zoning Board of Appeals files its decision on the renewal application with the town."
Motion is made and seconded to approve this amendment of the bylaw, of the zoning bylaws in regard to home-based contracting business, Section 540.9, as you see on your warrant, and by adding the following sentence after the words "Section 540 of this bylaw," which you'll see in the middle of the paragraph. "If the applicant files a complete application for renewal of the special permit, prior to its expiration, the special permit shall be extended up to the time the Zoning Board of Appeals files its decision on the renewal application with the town." Mr. Wheeler?
"The Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on April ninth, two thousand and thirteen, to consider comments concerning Article Thirty-Seven on the Town of Berlin Annual Town Meeting Warrant to be held on May sixth, two thousand and thirteen. At the Planning Board meeting held on Tuesday, April twenty-third, two thousand and thirteen, the Planning Board voted four in favor, zero opposed to this article."
Is that with the addition in disposal?
May I?
Yes, you may.
Thank you. So for a long period of time, Article Number Section 540 home-based contracting business has been in our, our zoning bylaw. And it's become one of the more problematic parts of our zoning bylaw and the Board of Appeals in having to issue the special permit has ended up in a number of situations where they've been faced with wanting to grant the special permit but fearful that, that the proponent of a home-based contracting business might very well outgrow the property that their enterprise is located on. Essentially, their business grows beyond what the bylaw provides for. And what this opportunity gives us by putting a time limit on it is it gives neighbors, butters, other citizens, other boards in town, an opportunity to come back after a period of five years when an applicant would have to come in and renew and be given a choice or an opportunity to, to voice their either agreement that the, that the, there ought to be an extension or perhaps concerns that they have that would lead to a revocation essentially of the permit. So a business that continues to comply with the bylaw would be essentially fine. The Board of Appeals would say, go right ahead, we'll issue you another permit for another period of time. But if the business is outgrown, the initial outline of this special permit, what the conditions were, the opportunity would be there for the neighbors and the Board of Appeals to take a different action. So if you have questions?
Are there others that wish to speak to this motion? Mr. Martel? No, that's not right.
Peter Hoffman, for a change. So this, this amendment, I just learned of, the amendment and the motion, I just learned of tonight, having not read the notes or the book in advance. It seems to strike me as a way to put a home contracting business, which I'm not out of business. So a businessman or woman puts together their business, makes the application, the application is granted, five years hence. For whatever reason, the Z B A decides not to renew their home contracting business, which doesn't make sense in a business environment and they are now forced to shut down. It just seems like big government in little town Berlin. And I'm not sure that's what a little sleepy town like ours wants. This is not the sum of Bonn Mall, this is home contracting business. And I think the enormous power that that amendment will wield will make some people suffer, perhaps unnecessarily. The other side of that point, of course, is the neighbors and the butters and other interested parties, just like was said, will have the right to opine on their neighbor's business. But isn't, isn't it something we should think about in a small town environment like we are, not having Big Brother and that much involved in the say-so of someone's business? Just a thought.
Hi, I'm Buzz Harris, I live on Village Lane in Berlin. I'm not sure I share the view of the gentleman that just spoke. I've heard some concerns about prior home contract, home contracting businesses in Berlin that have very clearly outgrown the footprint of the very clearly outgrown the footprint of the home at which they're being run in terms of the size and number of vehicles showing up on the lot, and other logistical reasons like that. If a business is expanding that rapidly and becomes that large, it may not be appropriate any longer for it to be home-based. So I don't think it's just the town of Berlin looking for authority to do something, I think they're looking to address the agenda concerns of people living next door to maybe way too many trucks. Thanks.
Doronis? Thomasin?
I hate to do this because I know this is a problem, I was on the planning board for many years, but you indicated that effectively if a home-based business stayed, sort of at the scope and manner, didn't make material change, then of course, an extension would be granted. I'm not sure I see that in the bylaw, and I wonder, you know, what the basis was for you saying that. Because for me, if that's the case, if somebody has stuck with their special permit, hasn't grown beyond it, then it should certainly, it seems to me, be extended. Because people who moved in in the interim knew what they had and so... So could you address how it is that if somebody has followed the rules, not grown, maintained a consistent business, that they would have an extension with reasonable choice?
My assumption has always been that the Board of Appeals has bent over backwards in order to try to find accommodation for any home-based business, and they've done this consistently, and I believe that that's going to be the flavor that they will continue to use as they move into the future. There's nothing in this bylaw that, you know, says it's automatic that you get your renewal. But my belief, over the years and watching the Board of Appeals, is that indeed, they lead candidates to try to find ways in which to comply, every step of the way. And I can't imagine in this town that that's going to change, that's just the tradition that we've seen on the planning board and the Board of Appeals as well. That I would imagine, if you're a lawyer, would put some reasonable doubt in your mind, but I'm not convinced that that's an issue that we need to be concerned about. The part of this bylaw that we're trying to address is this concern on the part of the neighbors and the concern on the part of the Board of Appeals, that you're really in a situation where once that permit is granted, it's very, very difficult, as that business grows beyond the bounds of the initial scope and conditions, to reel it back in. And this five-year window, we believe, gives us that opportunity. And it's similar to what's been done in other towns with similar situations where special permits can be granted, and the Attorney General has passed those bylaws that have been enacted in those other communities. And so we tried to model ours on what had passed muster in other towns.
Mr. Anderson?
I think that's a satisfactory judgment, I believe in the judgment of the local boards, and if that policy were to change, I'd probably be up here suggesting an amendment to this in the future, and I think that's always available to us.
Is there anyone else? Now I'm going to ask you to vote. The motion is that we amend the Berlin zoning bylaws by adding under section 540 home-based contracting business the following sections, 540.9, duration of special permit. And you have the paragraph that is as printed in your article. And we have one sentence to add after the words "section 540 of this bylaw" in the middle of the paragraph. "If the applicant files a complete application for renewal of the special permit, prior to its expiration, the special permit shall be extended up to the time the zoning board of appeals files its decision on the renewal application with the town." All those in favor say aye?
Aye!
Those opposed, no. I declare a two-thirds vote in favor. Article 38, see if the town will amend the Berlin zoning bylaws by adding to section 653 accessory buildings and structures, the following sentence after the current 653.1. Ron Verruska of the planning board.
I move that the town vote to amend the Berlin zoning bylaws by adding to section 653 accessory buildings and structures, the following sentence after the current 653.1. "If the detached accessory building is a one-story building to be used as a tool and storage shed, playhouse, or similarly used, and the floor area does not exceed 200 square feet, the re-aided minimum requirements may be reduced to 20 feet."
Motion is made to second it, that the town will amend the zoning bylaws by adding to section 653 accessory buildings and structures, the following sentence after the current 653.1. "If the detached accessory building is a one-story building to be used as a tool and storage shed, playhouse, or similarly used, the floor area does not exceed 200 square feet, the re-aided minimum requirements may be reduced to 20 feet." Mr. Verruska?
The Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on April 9th, 2013 to consider comments concerning Article 38 on the Town of Berlin annual town meeting warrant to be held on May 6th, 2013. At the planning board meeting held on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2013, the planning board voted four in favor, zero opposed to Article 38.
Want to address this for the motion?
Yes, the purpose of this article is twofold, is for the small type of accessory building in the tool shed, give some relief to the setbacks from the property line. The other purpose is to make it clear that buildings of this type do have to be set back from the property line. Buildings do not happen of this type and not require a building permit, and we found out some people assume they could put them anywhere right up onto the property line. So this is to clarify that situation.
Is there anyone else who wish to speak to this motion? Hearing none, I'm asking you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye!
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 39, see if the town will amend the Berlin zoning bylaws by adding under article 9 signs, the following section 933 political signs, and there's two sections for that. Mr. Verruska?
I move that the town vote to amend the Berlin zoning bylaws by adding under section 933 signs, the following section has 933 political signs. 933.1, such temporary signs shall conform to section 914.1. 933.2, such signs can be put up or placarded no earlier than six weeks prior to the election, and must be removed within 72 hours of the closing calls.
Motion made to second it, and I believe this is the same terms that you have written in the article as originally printed.
The Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on April 9th, 2013 to consider comments concerning Article 39 on the Town of Berlin annual town meeting warrant to be held on May 6th, 2013. At the planning board meeting held on Tuesday, April 23rd, 2013, the planning board voted four in favor, zero opposed to Article 39. The purpose of this article is to make it clear that these political signs cannot stay up forever, and can't be up forever, and there's a time when they can be put up and when they have to be taken down.
Has something been done to be certain that we aren't going to want to follow Article 1 of the amendments in the Constitution of the United States?
We've looked at other towns who have passed a similar bylaw, and it's been approved by the Attorney General.
Anyone else want to speak to the motion? Richard Sardell? Richard Sardell, I'm not here to say no. Could someone just speak on, this is very, on enforcement? On how this would be enforced? It may be covered elsewhere, I don't have all these bylaws. Ron?
The building inspector is the sign enforcement officer. He would have to send a cease and desist away in order to remove the sign.
Victoria? Victoria Gaisber?
Victoria Gaisber, Village Lane. I want to clarify, is this on your own property or on the public property? Okay, in that case, I'm totally against it. Because I believe in free speech, and sometimes this is, a political sign means more than just a statement about a current election.
Anyone else? None, I'm asking you to vote. The motion is essentially as the article is written, all those in favor say aye?
Aye!
Those opposed, no.
No!
Okay, we need to count. Do I have all my counters still here that wants to count that? I think so. All those in favor, please raise your hands. 16 on the left, 11 in the center, 22 on the right. All those opposed? Okay, we have 49 in favor and 17 opposed. There are a total of 66 votes cast, and two-thirds, which would be 44, so the motion passes. With the two-thirds vote, which is required for a zoning amendment. Okay, next up. 39 is, now that sign's 40. This one is about site plan contents. Tom, Sanfido Planning?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to amend the Berlin zoning bylaws by leaving the second sentence under section 1234, required site plan contents, and replace it with, "All site plans shall be presented on a standard 24 by 36 sheets in an electronic format, and shall be prepared at sufficient scale to show, and in sections titled Electronic Submissions Requirements for Subdivisions, A and R, and As-built Plans, add the word 'site plans.'"
Motion made to second it, and this is in the same form as the article of yesterday.
Mr. Moderator, the Berlin Planning Board held a public hearing on April 9th, 2013 to consider comments concerning Article 40 on the Town of Berlin annual town meeting warrant to be held on May 6th, 2013. At the planning board meeting held on April 23rd, 2013, the planning board voted four in favor, zero opposed to Article 40. This is basically a housekeeping item, this is to require that proponents coming before us submit their plans in proper format and to capture site plans.
Anyone has a question or a comment on this motion?
Could I just ask, this is only for the planning board, this is not for like, those that will come before the ZBA? Because we do have folks that come in for things in the A and R, 11 by 14 or something like that. So not every plan has to be this expansive size. I don't have a book with me. Thank you.
Would I be correct to say that this also has to do with providing appropriate information so that the map's going to be updated? Anyone else? In that case, I'm asking you to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye!
Opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Thank you. Article 41, see if the town will transfer from available funds or some money to be used to other reduction of 2015-14 tax rate, or take any action relative to it. Bill Tomasino of the Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article 41.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article 41.
Want to comment on it?
Just don't have the money.
Don't have the money? Anything to be said on the motion to pass over? All those in favor?
Aye!
Opposed? Richard? I didn't see your hand, I'm sorry.
We've been building the fund up for years.
To offset the Tufts.
And the intent has been to take that money and to each year, take it out of the stabilization fund to offset the increases from the building of the new Tuft School and the additional cost. Last year, a hundred thousand dollars. The plan initially was to offset, I won't get into the details, but last year, a hundred thousand dollars. And I think it's only appropriate to do the same thing this year. It's not taking it out of free cash. It's not raising it. It's taking it from the money we've saved over the years to offset the Tuft. Partially offset the increases from Tuft. And I think it's only in good faith that at least a hundred thousand dollars be transferred from stabilization and use toward the reduction of the 2013-14 tax rate. So I'd ask the Finance Committee to huddle and reconsider this and come forward and do the right thing.
The Finance Committee have a comment in the guideline to decide to pass over instead of use in my committee. Phil?
One thing I want to mention about stabilization. We've taken out ninety-six thousand dollars this year for the school roof repairs. We also took out a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a couple of years back, funding a new fire truck. Our intent is to pay back that money and we haven't been able to pay it back yet because we're accounting on mitigation funds which we haven't received. So I don't think we should be taking any more money out right now until we can pay back what we owe.
I didn't plan to get it. Hold on just a minute, somebody else wants to speak. Peter, do you want to speak on this?
Peter Hoffman again. So I guess I don't understand government operations very well, but what is the downside to approving this motion and then giving the authority to the Finance Committee to transfer the funds as they see fit? Why not give yourselves the authority to do it? And then if there's ten thousand, do it. If there's a hundred and fifty thousand, do it. Since there's no sum defined in the motion.
Only the town can vote. Only at the time of any time appropriate.
There's no sum in the motion to define a sum. Realizes to me. But that's what's currently written, there's no sum in there. That's the article. You haven't buried money in it.
Only the town can vote on the stabilization.
Okay, thanks.
Richard?
Yeah, I don't have the up-to-date numbers on stabilization. It was around a mid and a half, I believe, in that neighborhood. The guidelines are probably come out to a five-hundred thousand, I think. Hundred or over before it. We stated that, the treasurer did. But this is money that lowers the tax rate by using what was put aside over the years to do that. So the fact that it happened to use a little bit for some other purposes, which we could have discussed separately, has no bearing on this. We've got more than sufficient by any of our guidelines in the stabilization fund to allow this to happen as was intended. And Judy was one of the sentences, the more vocal ones on, when we put this money aside, it's for Tuft, to offset it to Tuft. So I don't think it's right that we don't give it back to the taxpayers. It's their money. It's not the town, it's theirs.
Mr. Harman? Dennis, does he want? Dennis Garibaldi? My name is advisor to the committee chair.
Just for the record, going into tonight's meeting, there was only a million eighty thousand left and there's ninety-six less now. So we've gone under the million mark.
And what's the guideline?
Most towns, when they're getting by, look for five percent. We're up around fourteen percent in stabilization.
Well, it's down. Mr. Harman?
The FinCom team did huddle while we were chatting on other places. We, two years ago, took, I believe, two hundred thousand dollars in stabilization. Last year, a hundred thousand to sort of spread across several years the impact of Tufts. And we have taken a vote of four to zero against taking a thousand dollars out.
The motion before you is to pass over the article. All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed? All those opposed? Motion passes. Article 42, see if the town will reserve money and transfer from available funds to some money in stabilization fund to the stabilization fund or take any action relative to it. Mr. Thomasin?
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over Article 42.
Motion to pass over? Do you want to speak to that?
Basically, as I mentioned before, we would like to repay the money back to stabilization we borrowed from the fire truck two years ago. But again, this will depend on us getting mitigation money. So we're not in the position to do that right now.
Any other comments on Article 42? The motion to pass over. All those in favor say aye.
Aye!
Those opposed, no. Motion carries by unanimous vote. Article 43.
The one you called, I'm waiting for. I move, we adjourn this meeting to Monday, May 13th, 2013, at 12 o'clock noon at the Berlin Town Offices, Lower Level, 23 Litten Street. At which time and place, the polls will be open for the election of town offices under Article 43. And then following the announcement of the results of the election, this meeting be dissolved.
Motion is made to second it. We adjourn this meeting to Monday, May 13th, 2013, at 12 o'clock noon at the Berlin Town Offices, Lower Level, 23 Litten Street. At which time and place, the polls will be open to the election of town offices under Article 43. And following the announcements of the results of this election, this meeting be dissolved. I want to call your attention to Monty Miller's fine photo on the back of the town report and hope that that expresses our feelings in voting on this motion. All those in favor?
Aye!
Opposed, no. The meeting is adjourned. I would hopefully help us with the chairs as well.